I'll call this meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Easter Peter.
Hey, man.
Here.
No.
Here.
No, good. Here. Here. Uh, please, uh, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, El Tere, motion on the agenda is received, proposed, uh, moved.
Second.
All right, it's a moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Uh, next we'll move on to the budget, work sessions, discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of fiscal year twenty-five Black Hawk County budget. I just know proposed, um, the, the microphone system in the room is, is down, you know, today, so I just ask people to, to speak up. It's what they can.
All right, good morning, everybody. We are gonna have several presentations today, and the first one will be by representatives of the Black Hawk County Soil and Water Conservation District. You probably remember, um, the county has historically funded them with two thousand dollars a year. Yeah, and they would like to talk to you about what they've been working on. So we have Jerry Hornsberry and Vern Bitch, who are both elected representatives to the district board, and I'm going to turn it over to them.
All right.
Can I go to the audience? Please do.
Welcome back.
Jerry, are you going in there?
I'm hoping my voice will carry.
Yes.
And Tom, can you hear me? Is that a yes? Okay. Well, good morning, uh, as, as Michelle has kind of pointed out, we, we represent five of the elected officials that served for the Black Hawk County Soil and Water, uh, District. And we're, we're a creature of, of state government, there is actually a hundred districts across the state, Potomac County is split in two, so there's actually a hundred of us. And, but we represent the agricultural interest and what our job is protect the soil and water and still maintain the, the economic viability of farming in Black Hawk County. And so, but we do that with, we, we have no taxing authority. We have very little regulatory authority, we get, could get involved in a, in a soil workshop discussion. Uh, and, but our funding sources, we get a little tiny pool from the state, uh, less than three thousand dollars, your two, thank you very much, I'm gonna repeat that several times. And then we raise the rest. And we don't have a full-time staff, we have staff that, that work for us, but they're not our staff, we don't have that full-time employee. So we're trying to, and, and, and then we have a lot of money coming to Jerry's, is writing grants, because we don't have anybody write our grants, so we have to do our own grants and raise our own money. So we're doing a lot of good stuff out there, but we'd like to do more. And what we really need is a little bit more operating cash, because there are grants that come in where we have to have a little bit of a match, or we just need to spend some money to go out and recruit people and raise money. Your two is great, we'd like to ask for ten, to give us a little more operating capital so we can move forward. We can talk in, in a lot of detail about how much money we bring in, it's almost a million dollars, and Jerry's gonna correct me on the wrong answer job here. But we, we have an economic impact on this count, we're bringing a lot of money in and we're having an impact, protecting the soil and water, but also helping the private landowners do a better job of taking care of their land. So, we're asking for up to ten thousand dollars, and Jerry, you've got some additional comments you'd like to have.
Thank you. Did you all get the letter that I put together? I have a copy if you don't have it, okay. The, uh, as Vern just said, in fiscal year twenty-three, conservation practices that we paid to farmers and others who wanted to install conservation practices, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that isn't a one hundred percent funding for the practice. Sometimes it was fifty percent, sometimes it was seventy-five percent, so the balance, the recipient paid, and so that kind of spread money into the counting, because they had to pay for services to finish the conservation practice. So, the, that's a large economic multiplier for the county, as we see it. And, but today the district is at an inflection point, a real big time of change, because we have unprecedented funding coming from the federal government. And that funding will be in, up in every year until twenty thirty-one. And in order to take advantage of that funding for conservation practices, we need some more operating funds. And the idea is, we have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to install so many conservation practices in the county, whether it be in the rural area, but in urban as well. So it's unprecedented for sure, and once in a, a generation. And to install these practices, we think that the, the opportunity is even more keen because of the recurring serious weather events that we have, we wanna protect that, so keep it on the, the farm ground, and, um, there's so much to be said about our water quality that needs fixing, so we are so anxious to get going on this. And, um, in the letter, it, uh, suggested some ways that we might use this money, we have a five-year plans, we really have to meld the two and figure out what's next. But we are so passionate as locally-elected volunteer conservation leaders that we really believe it's, you know, it's our soil, it's our water, and it's our future. So we would appreciate any additional support that you could give us. Thank you for your time.
I would ask Jerry, is public, didn't receive that information, if you maybe just share some of those things that you're looking at?
Sure, thank you, um, of course my glasses are over there.
Yeah, I, I have a purpose here, uh, but you, there, there are a few bullets on the back, and, uh, again, as I've mentioned, we're, we're using as matching funds for, uh, for grants we apply for, uh, educational materials, we, we're very limited as to how much, how many newsletters we can send out, how many postcards, just paper products, being able to get the word out there, hosting conferences and workshops and programs, we just did a, uh, a cover crop workshop at Hawkeye here, and, and we paid fifty-seven, uh, landowners showed up, and we paid, we paid the funding to help make that possible, and it was a great introduction for some of those folks in the cover crop, which is a tool in the toolbox to protect water, public reach, outreach. One of the things we, this has seemed odd, Hawkeye Community College, because it's community college, can't apply for those federal programs. They are, they farm about two hundred and fifty acres of ground, we would love to work directly with their new farm manager to do some of these innovative uh, soil protection practices, but they are not eligible for the programs that are out there, so we wanna work with them, so we put those practices on the ground, so those, uh, farmers that are learning will have that experience. We can't do it any other way at this point in time, they're, they're in conflict, was resolved that. Uh, historically underserved urban groups, Jerry has, has written a couple of groups, we're working, and I, that's, there's, it, it's amazing the groups that are out there, that you don't even know that they're there, we're helping, help them farm on, on small plots in the, in the urban area. Uh, again, our website, work with watershed management authorities, that's another piece of government, federal, state government that was created, but there's, it's unma, uh, funded, there's no, there's no funding for it. And so we're trying to work with four or five different watershed management authorities, and they don't have any money, and we don't have any money, we need to help, you know, some money to work that. And then ultimately, the last thing I think is kind of important, is funding for stipends for interns. We had, uh, Warren, one R, she, she, but she was our, she was our intern last spring, she went out and surveyed CRP ground. But we have state money that it comes down, but we have to put a ten percent match with that money. And so we just need a little bit of money to have interns and, and young people come into the office to help us do our work, but also for them to learn about, about.
Thank you.
When, when was the, the last time this, uh, we raised?
You know, when I was, what, where's my, when I was here, and, and Mike, and I was doing Mike's evaluation, it was two thousand dollars. It's been a long time, I, it's been, it's been in place for a very long.
Uh, I mean, you guys, you, you do a remarkable job of, of leveraging the small amount of resources you have to pretty big dollar, and pretty big, and pretty clean part of work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And your goal then for fundraising, other in addition to asking us for ten dollars, well, if you're looking at other sources and?
We have been looking at the grants that keep rolling in because of all this federal money coming in. And in order to receive the grant, we have to do a match. And we don't have that, and we have not done a, a campaign, if you will, for fundraising, we've relied on donations from the commissioners.
Yeah.
To, to make it happen on the events that we do hold. Thank you.
I think it's a, a pretty reasonable request.
Thank you, thank you. Just have to tell you about the urban project we're working on that, that Vern mentioned, we're working with the Burmese, Congolese, Hispanics, Blacks, and then we have something for beginning farmers, which is really tough to be a beginning farmer, and with the price of farm ground and equipment. And they are so enthusiastic, but we have to have interpreters, right? And we were having this one event with them, and one of the main reasons they wanted to come to learn is, what's this Iowa weather all about?
When do we plant?
What, what do we, how do we grow, you know? So we have a real purpose to help them, and community gardens and all of that, so it's a new, a new phase of what we're doing. An exciting journey.
But ultimately, thank you for what you have given us.
Yes.
I mean, we really appreciate that, Mason, you can see from our little bit of money, that is huge, it's half of what we get. So thank you for what we have been, we've been getting, and again, I hope, consider our, our request for ten.
No, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are going to have Dr. Vickley talk about, uh, medical examiner budget.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You all have a copy of my budget. Uh, the upper part, as you can see, is pretty, uh, unimportant, well, I did important, but it doesn't have anything. Uh, the only two important things are the two, the one, the professional services and the health services. Um, I'm gonna bundle those together because they kind of dovetail. Um, over the, uh, last year, we did, uh, roughly seven hundred cases. Uh, that's about average for our, our group. Um, half of those are full cases, which means we had to go out and investigate the cases personally. Uh, the other half are, uh, ones that we determined were not gonna be, uh, full investigations. And, uh, that's determined by, uh, what, uh, we, uh, are told, uh, by the people that are on the scene. Uh, if they expected us or anything like that, we don't investigate them, uh, as on-site. Last year, we had roughly eighty autopsies, this is, this is a major expense for us. Um, if the, the price is determined by, uh, the, the state medical examiner's office, it can be between two thousand and four thousand per case. And we have to pay it, I mean, that's, we're, we're told this is gonna be the price, and we're stuck with it. Um, we don't have anybody local here who does, does autopsies, so we, we don't have any options besides going to the state. The health services part, the professional services is pretty much, uh, our case, uh, case load. But the, uh, health services, that includes the autopsies, if we have one of our, uh, county, uh, people who dies out of county, uh, that county is gonna send us a bill for that. And if they do an autopsy, they'll send us a bill for that also. Um, we're, we're committed to pay for that. Um, we have, uh, transportation fees for every one of our autopsies. That's, uh, four hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, by, uh, the Mercy One Advent Service, they transport our people down. And then once they come back, they're, uh, brought back by a funeral home. And the funeral home, uh, will charge whatever they want. They have a set fee of two hundred dollars that we were paying, and, uh, the states, uh, basically said, we have to pay whatever they, you know, home bills. We didn't have options.
Have ours, have our local funeral homes and work well with, have the locals work here, work well with you as far as?
They will, they will bring a body back to, uh, water or for being buried or whatever.
Has the cost increased here considerably then?
Oh, a number of funeral homes are a little higher than, well, all of them are a little higher than two hundred, but, uh, um, yeah, they all, some of them are a little higher.
Like a hundred dollars higher or?
By, like a hundred, so, yeah. They're, they're charging by mile, but the, again, the mileage is different for everything with them. How about questions? Oh, well, I'll go over the, uh, numbers that we had, last year, uh, we were budgeted at, uh, roughly, uh, a hundred thousand. Well, Michelle, you can probably go over that.
I can do that, yep. I, I did increase, I'm suggesting that you increase the budget this year, we did try to adjust it for twenty twenty-four, but we just have unprecedented amounts of cases and things going on, so I'm trying to keep up with what the actual activities are doing. So their total expenses for fiscal twenty-three were three hundred and seventy-one thousand, and I, so I'm suggesting we set the budget at three seventy-nine, five fifty. It's almost all for the staffing calls, and I, I'm thinking that rate probably hasn't gone up for some time either, the, the rate that we pay Dr. Vickley and the staff to go to those, where we're seeing the increased costs is really in additional cases or the autopsies that, you know, set to pay with the state charge a few, and that changes.
These, these things are all out of our control, you can read them, uh, people die, we have to go see them or, or investigate it in some way or another, um. You know, I, I don't have control of that, of course not.
We keep hoping we can stop it.
Nobody can. States taking things out of our control too, so, so, it's causing things are?
I, I understand, you know, just, uh, in our budget, it's taking a, a great job, but like, now, they say, what, what can I do about it?
This statement for years. Look at, you know, let's look at the numbers, can you maybe help me understand a little bit, we're about halfway, the, the FY twenty-four actual, we're about halfway through the year. But the current expenditures through the budgeted are, you know, the professional services are basically at fifty percent, well under that, for the, for the health services. Is there sort of an expected uptick?
I think it seems like the time I've been there, the bills have come in more later, I, there seems to be a lot of kind of activity through the holidays, yeah, I don't know what to call it. And it takes quite, it takes quite a while for the state to bill, it, it, it's springtime before. And I mean, I would love it if they would go down, but, you know, as Colleen shared with us last weekend, with our general assistance department, she works very closely with Dr. Vickley, we're seeing those, you know, lines rise, and many of those are ones he's had to work with too, so it's just.
The problem with that, the end of it is, uh, the, uh, the people will die and, uh, your families disappear. And, uh, by that, I mean, the hospitals can't get a hold of them, you can't get a hold of them, and we have this body sitting on our, so we have to do something, uh, by law, I think they have to, you know, not. So then Colleen doesn't want to think of that. But it's been a big expense, a big expense.
A bunch of them, it seems like it'll probably get us closer to the actual, because next to.
Trying, yeah, trying to budget enough, and not too much, but I don't have a crystal ball, so.
But it's, nothing else is pretty straightforward.
Any other questions or any?
Any questions for?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next, we're gonna get, uh, well, this, this bears.
So, good morning, board. Word, uh, you know, you guys could be a little bit more enthusiastic, you got me following the metal examiner and, uh, it's a tough show, right? Especially, um, at the age of fifty-nine, and I've been diagnosed with, uh, heart disease, and, um, so I'm going through some genetic, um, testing, find out that's associated with the family, I've got a monitor on things, I still hope I end up being on the slab, uh, early. Um, but I'll do what I can, so, good morning, uh, you can see our purpose, um, our service, and then our mission statement, uh, we still live by Abraham Lincoln's perspective, that we should take care of everyone that served our great country to include their surviving spouses. Um, you could also see some of our statistical data, um, just some of the highlights. Uh, one of the good things that our staff does is put together a statistical data for you guys, um, and I try to brief it at least once a month. Uh, but these are some of the highlights, and the positive thing, if you could see from FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, in each one of those categories, we're, we're still charging in the right direction, um, in that standpoint, um. Two things, the, uh, initial, uh, per visit, uh, is still continuing to go up, um, eventually we're gonna hit that, um, that, uh, curve, and it'll start going back down, uh, but unique to us with outreach and the support of the Black Hawk County, uh, uh, supervisors, you guys, when we go over this budget, you can see how we, we can help with increasing those numbers for our new clients through outreach. Uh, so just want to share that, and then, uh, the key point again, uh, and it's nothing on us, it's on how we get our veterans to come into our office. And now we're competitive with all the other ninety-nine counties in getting federal funds to come back to Black Hawk County. So our job is, is to conduit to the VA, uh, by getting those surviving spouses and veterans in our office, so that they can see if they're entitled to, uh, federal funds, and right now we're still sitting at about three point one million monthly, uh, federal dollars coming into our county, uh, serving our veterans and surviving spouses. Then moving on to our FY twenty-five budget, um, one of the things you're gonna notice about our FY twenty-five budget, and I really want to take my hat off to Michelle in working with me, uh, one thing that we haven't been identifying is we've been we've been, um, blessed to get donations coming in, but we haven't been actually um, articulating that out to the board supervisors, we do it with our commission, and our commission has voted on and approved this budget um, in the standpoint, uh, but she's been working with me so that we can identify the donation part, that we, we, we take in a lot of money, a lot of revenue, and so, uh, your budget, our budget's gonna reflect that, and, and some of these numbers you'll see. Uh, but at our, our revenue, uh, in particular, our, our veterans grants, again, our veteran grant is, uh, a ten thousand dollar state allotment, uh, we haven't been breaking out the, how we spend that. We send a report every year back to the state of Iowa, how we spent that money, and we're gonna do a better job of also articulating that out to the board supervisors and my commission, uh, in that report, and so I'll, I'll send you, when I finish here, I'll send you the last year's report of what we spent those state, uh, dollars on, um, in that standpoint. But it's budgeted out at ten thousand dollars, and all ninety-nine counties get that ten thousand dollars, uh, to be utilized, and they have some do's and some don'ts. And I'll also send you that if you're not aware of that. And then, uh, line item number two is the big one that, uh, me and Michelle's been working on, is the donations. Uh, you can see in actual FY twenty-two, uh, almost thirty-nine thousand dollars in donations to help with veterans, uh, and veteran support, um, in that standpoint. Over the Christmas holidays, we took in right around thirteen thousand dollars, uh, just in the, the month of November and December, in just donations. So we wanna end with those donations, now we have to spend it, and so we're trying to create line items so that we can show um, you, the board supervisors, how we're spending those donations, and, and that standpoint, uh, because it is revenue. I am a taxpayer, and I wanna make sure I'm taking care of taxpayers' money, right, um, in that standpoint. Then moving down to our expenses, um, you can see, uh, one of them is we, we do have, um, through the step program, a couple of our employees did get in a small increase in that standpoint, um. And, uh, so that's our salaries and benefits, one of the things that I don't do is I don't, I do a lot of outreach after hours, but I don't, uh, engage my staff to do it, because I don't want them to earn, um, um, extra pay, so to say, overtime, so it affects our revenue, uh, so I take that on, uh, for the most part, so when you ask that question, where's my staff, well, if I do things after hours, I would have to pay the staff, uh, overtime, so I try not to do that, that's them. And then if we move down to our operating expenses, uh, you can see we incorporated some of our state allocations into also the county funds. Um, one you'll see is educational training, um, last year was about five thousand dollars. We budgeted around four thousand or so from the county, and then another three or so from state allocation, and that's where it comes up, that's grand sum of seven thousand. State allocation, one of the requirements is to spend three thousand dollars of that ten thousand dollars on training, uh, in education. So we, we combine that, and that's the reason why that percentage is the way it is. Again, our budget is zero-sum game, for the last four years, our budget has been stacked. Uh, we have not asked for any money, we have, uh, if anything, we try to give back every year in that standpoint. Um, and then you can go through some of the other numbers, but one in particular, uh, if you move down to advertisement and, and publishing, again, we merged, uh, our state allocation, because we can use state allocation with advertising, with publishing, that's us, line item zero six nine two. It stands out because it says a hundred twenty-five percent over, uh, but what ended up happening was we, this is one of those line items that we adjusted and added our state allocations to support that. And that is the biggest pill, is, uh, um, if I was to say anything on these line items, that's how we reach veterans, is through advertising, whether it's on the radio, whether it's still through the Water of the Courier, um, or, um, any other activity that associates, whether it's social media, that's how we bring them in. One of the things that we do is we ask a veteran, how, how did you hear about coming in? Um, sometimes they say radio, uh, majority of the time it's by word of mouth. Um, but it's good to know that they've seen it either of the Water of the Courier, they heard on the radio, or they got it by word of mouth, uh, in that standpoint. Another one that you're gonna say, hey, wait a minute, a line item eight oh eight, what is food and stamps? Well, those are, those are, that's food that we purchase for like our Christmas meals, our Thanksgiving meals, through donated funds. So, um, again, this is one of those where we've merged in, um, the county and donation fund, so we can, you can show, we can see where we're spending that donated money in that standpoint. Um, any questions in that category?
I, I was.
Our operating expenses.
The, I'm assuming that printing services, that decrease is offset in part by the increase in advertising and publishing?
Right, sir, and for the, for the most part, um, um, supervisor Paul, we, we were having some booklets made up, um, and we're gonna have to re, re-engage in that, but that's where we've been dropping off on making a pamphlet, because we have an abundant amount of, in that standpoint. Are there any other questions associated with that?
So you can see those expense line items, exclusive salary increased five thousand, but we also increased the donation revenue, so when Yolando's saying he hasn't asked for more, that's, that's what he means. Um, all the donations, state grant and property tax money, it's all rolled up here together, which, um, it makes it easier to see how much we're spending on each type of expense, but it makes it harder to see this is what we're doing with donated funds and assort them.
And again, it's a, it's a good time to be a veteran service officer, because the state of Iowa, they also have what they call the Iowa Trust Fund, which allows us to help veterans who are in need to get, uh, merchant repairs done. So it doesn't allow us to affect the county funds or our donated funds, because those are coming out of another pot of money. Um, and, uh, and so that helps us also with the rent build, we have an, an, an intercod grant, uh, but we can't spend, it's not revenue, it's we, we send in the cost of that, that rent, let's say it was six thousand dollars, then I, Intercod pays that six thousand dollars, so we don't really charge revenue, but it helps us, it helps us um, with operating expenses and helps us with the outreach, so that veterans are aware that these programs are there, but it doesn't affect the county. Uh, so it's, it's a, a great, uh, program, uh, that we have in that standpoint. Other than that, uh, I'm just standing by to address any other questions, um, and I can explain or send out, um, the allocations, and I'll do that when I leave here, um, and send that out, so you guys are aware, so it's in your, um, in your back pocket as a tool, when you're aware, when you're aware of what we're doing, and how we are servicing our veterans, and, uh, any other thing that, uh, associated with servicing our veterans. Again, it's an opportunity, I, I'm one of my fifth year, uh, and I'm gonna continue to, to, um, say that, you know, I'm not an elected official, I was just someone that you guys hired, I love what I do, um, taking care of veterans, a, a way to give back to veterans, um, is, I, I take that to heart. But the other thing I take to heart, out of the thirty years in the military, they said, never make your bosses look, um, never embarrass your boss, right, so I look at the board supervisors as my boss, and I do everything I can not to ever embarrass you with anything, whether it's the finances, whether it's the customer service, as long as I'm sitting in this job, and that's what I wanted to leave with you today, yeah.
Thank you, Arthur. Or any other questions, it's all pretty straightforward, I think it covers the kitchen rooms. Really great job.
And I'm proud to say, I turned on the morning. Brian got called to the courtroom, so I think we're gonna jump ahead and talk about maintenance with Rory, and hopefully Brian will be able to watch.
Well, I can't promise I won't embarrass you, but. So is this supposed to be set up this way?
Yeah, that might happen.
Okay. So when we did our end of the year accomplishments, you know, we kind of touched a little on the. The mission statement that we have for maintenance. Now, this is published on our Black Hawk County website, and we do take a lot of great pride in this. Our guys, our staff, administrative staff. Work very hard to keep our facilities efficient, safe. It is challenging, we are a small group, I think I had mentioned. You know, we're small in numbers, but I'd like to think that we're kind of mighty in presence. But we do, we get our, we get involved in so many. Of the other departments, projects that are going on, it just seems like we kind of have our finger involved in just about everything. With regards to, you know, with the exception of treasure and secondary roads, you know, they're, they're pretty self-sufficient, I think. But yeah, I, I take a great deal of pride, we are a small staff, but boy, we. We, we are on our toes and very busy, so I think I'd like to say first and foremost, just thank you to my staff. Thank you to my administrative staff, which is essentially Carol. And our safety director, who was a great addition to the county, doing great things for us. And hopefully over the years, we'll see some great benefit by the having that position, so. Moving on. So as you look at my operating budgets. So as you'll notice, it's a fairly straightforward one, forward one this year, but as you'll notice with the revenues. There is a large one there for fifty-five thousand. You know, over the the last year, one thing that that we've really been working on is. Really thoroughly auditing those. Those bills that go out to those agencies such as the state over at the Pinecrest facility. What they do is they pay us for salaries, benefits associated with staff that are over there. Working on any particular thing. They also pay us for the amount of space that they occupy. Which would mean utilities based on that percentage, certain expenses and things like that. With the new maintenance program that we have, our goal or our hope is that we can. Do a better job really monitoring with regards to laboring. So for an example, if we have one maintenance staff over there, and we get into a situation where we have to send a couple more maintenance staff over there. We really need to start capturing that, and and and. You know, turning those expenses over to them so we can get compensated for that. And I'm not saying that we necessarily have done a bad job, I just think there's room for improvement. So we're, we put in a increase for revenue, and that is our, I think we can achieve that. With the tools that we have at hand now. And then I'll get into staffing here in just a minute. So. Expenses, salary and benefits, as you can notice, there is a. An increase there, so you have the across-the-board increases, but more specifically. We are asking for another position. We're asking for a administrative aide one position, more of a clerical role. And this kind of ties back into a little bit of what I talked about with the revenue. My goal is I want to have a person who can really spend their time focusing on, you know, auditing those types of services. Making sure that, you know, our, our I's are getting dotted, our T's are getting crossed. There is an abundance of, of work that this person could handle. My goal then is to take the existing position and move more into projects. And 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 working with, you know, all the projects that we get involved with, and really helping stay on task with those. And I, 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 over the years, that's, that's been challenging, we're a very small group, so it comes down to essentially two of us. Doing the administrative part of that, and we're really starting to feel the pressure. And we feel that by adding that additional clerical staff would really over time. Hold its weight and pay for itself. So.
I think you mentioned too, if we've had some conversation on that too. Something related to ARCA projects and that type of thing, and it's a very critical time right now, support projects. But that this is a position that we do much more, it's just that right now, we're kind of working with. There's some heavy.
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, obviously, the the workload is large due to ARCA. But you know, one thing I had to ask myself when looking at this is, okay, can we sustain this, you know, five years down the road? Are we still going to be, you know, loaded down with projects? And what I can tell you, looking back the fourteen years. That's always been the case. We've always, I can't think of a time where we didn't have our plate pretty full with projects each year. We have over four hundred thousand, we're probably four hundred thousand square feet of buildings that we have to manage. And that takes a lot of efforts just to do that, not, not to mention any projects outside of that. So. I feel pretty confident moving forward that we're going to continue to have enough work for this position. Moving forward, there's a lot of things that we could focus harder on. I know with the safety position, ADA. You know, working together hand in hand on those types of projects with this position. I just see a lot of positive and payback from this.
So some of the work that probably would shift to here, I'm thinking sometimes, I don't care, it's a new, just a crazy amount of phone calls. Requests or people wanting to follow up and that.
Yeah, as, as you all know, you know, a phone call or, we'd like to think that they're all compliments, but unfortunately they're not. And so to handle a complaint, handle a resident, you know, we take our time. Trying to deal with those, and sometimes that could eat up a lot of time when you're, when you're trying to focus on other things. And so with this position, you know, that would be more, more focused on handling those phone calls. Handling work orders that come in, working with our new LIMB system, getting very familiar with that. And then allowing the other position to really focus on the, on the projects and. And and going out in the field and making sure things are keeping up with tasks. So hopefully that answers your question. So as you look down at the operating expenses, really what we did there. We. We, we kind of looked across the board, and we, we made, you'll see there's a lot of changes, but what we tried to do was. Reallocate, spread out to other line items to better reflect the historical expenses. Now, we do this, last time we did this has been a few years back, but what we find is that professional services account. Really gets kind of heavy. And what we found out is, you know, there, there could be some coding improvements in how we code that. And so at the end of the day, it all breaks out at the end as a, as a wash. But we just are more efficient in how we code those line items, so. The bright side of this is when you look at the operating expense totals, we are actually one percent negative. So we're actually just a bit lower. Now, when you add in the, the payroll, the staff benefits. That puts us at a total of seven point four percent. Resulting in a net of five percent as a total change. That's as far as budgets go with maintenance. I'd like to contribute a lot of that to projects that we've done in the past. When you look at utilities, I believe across the board, we had about a two percent increase. That's pretty unheard of this day of age, to only go up about two percent on utilities, and I contribute that a lot to. The energy savings that we resulted from projects. Obviously, we've got the solar array, but we also have new boilers over at the jail, the water heaters, which was a. Huge impact on that. Lighting, we've, we recently have gone to all LED lighting. So by doing a lot of these projects, we don't necessarily, we're not saving money, but we're not going up either. Like, like we would if we didn't do these projects, so. At two percent, I feel like that's pretty good. Historically, we've always increased that about five to six percent, so. We feel pretty confident with that number. And again, we're, that operating spends is flatlined, so. I think that's a testament to what the board has approved over the years and in the projects, allowed us to do. Is paying off, so.
Uh, Michelle, do you feel like the fifty-five thousand increase in revenue? That more detailed billing and accounting with the state, this is very realistic.
Hopefully, we haven't really gone into the details of doing that, but I. I would hope so.
One of the things specifically that I can talk about on that is. Previously, the administrative portion that we bill back to the state. We've had administrative aides, for an example, that did take the insurance, and so their, their labor rates were much lower. We did not capture that, so we're capturing that now, so that increases that labor rate, so we should get re- received. Higher revenues due to that. That's probably the the biggest one. The other one is with the addition of the LIMB maintenance system, it allows us to better track. The number of staff that we have to send over there and keep a running total of that, rather than just. Our one staff that's there forty hours a week. So between those two items, we feel like we can capture that. Or any other questions, Rory? This is actually a pretty light capital for us. Typically, it's a much larger list, but obviously with the addition of ARCA projects that we have, we felt like we. We needed to take a hard look at this one and realistically keen we handle it. And so what I did is I picked out the items that I felt were most important priority-wise. The X-ray machine, we had that on last year. Fortunately, I've been able to get by a couple of years without paying that service fee. But I, I feel like I am, I'm running out of my luck on that, and I think it'd be in our best interest to. Really start looking at replacing that. We have the exterior masonry. It's actually been, back in two thousand and fifteen. We performed the same light item, they told us within about five years it would have to be done again. We stretched it out a little longer than that. And we did test it each year, and each year it came back, no, you're good. This go-around, it's pretty obvious that it's needed, so this is a preventative maintenance for the jail. JCS. The exterior paint, if you look at that building, it is really starting to show some wear and tear. And once we do take on the ray mount and make that look pretty, we didn't want the JCS building to be. Sticking out as a sort of bump, so. That's just a repainting. These are fairly easy projects to to manage, and that's another reason why we picked them. Because we're going to be so involved on these other ones with regards to ARCA. Fifth floor dormer, dormer repair, that's over at Pinecrest, this has been our nemesis. For the last few years, quite a few years, we've been very reactive maintenance to those. For an example, if there's a leak, we react to it, we fix it. This has taken more of a proactive approach and thoroughly going through each dormer. Taking them apart, resealing them, reciting them. And even though the long-term goal might be to evacuate the fifth floor, we still need to address the water leaks, so. This is just a a hundred percent dormer go-through, find everything we can and repair it.
We maybe take a second look at, I see you put vinyl siding down here, but take a look at maybe some composite.
We certainly can. The only reason I did vinyl, that's currently what's up there now, but we can, we can look at other options to better fit the. The, the age of that building, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of new products out there from those. That look, feels like wood.
Believe me, my wife is showing me all those products. But yeah, you're right. Just to touch a little bit, I know we're not talking about twenty-six, but I just wanted to throw this out there. Because it's been a discussion over the last few years, but if you've noticed, I did put the landscaping in there. And I did it for both Pinecrest and Courthouse, and again, the reason I did that in twenty-six is because we are gonna have a fairly busy year coming up. But I did want to show that that is on our five-year, and we are really excited about doing that when we've had, we've got some ideas. We really want to actually outsource some, some professionals to give us some further ideas. But it goes without saying, both Pinecrest property and the courthouse is in definite need of some touching up. So it is on the list, and if, if you choose to to move that up, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
And we're gonna discuss by your plans. No, no, I meant to make sure we didn't, if we didn't ask you a question today. I do have a question on the painting, you mentioned the JCS building, is that a total that would include the ray mount?
No, I'm sorry, it would not include the ray mount. We, we actually have, I think Michelle had indicated the other day. I don't know where the funding source is necessarily coming from, but we did identify about three hundred thousand worth of expenses to go towards that building. Sprinkler system, fire alarm system, roof repair, heating and cooling. Electrical, probably the biggest one, and doing some touch-up on the outside vinyl, so. This painting is just the JCS, the blue stucco looking. Actually, I think I might have addressed that or brought it up a few years back, and and. And we got off on some other projects, so I'm kind of just bringing it back to life.
Some of the second floor reorientation of that.
That is still to be determined, and I know that we need to get together and talk about that, because that, I don't know what pot that might come out of. But I think that if we're, if we're gonna get serious about that particular project, which I think many are. It kind of goes hand in hand with something that's already approved, and that's the IT MIS room. And then moving IT over to the reporters, so. I think there's some more discussion that needs to be had for that, but that's, that could be a fairly large project in itself, and I don't know if that would be an ARCA project. If it is an ARCA project, that, that ball needs to get rolling quickly. It's, it's, it's been, yeah, it's been a year so far, and we're only, we're not even out in January yet, so. But no, to answer your question, I, it's not included in any of this, but I, I do think it's important to. Get that conversation going. Anything else, Ford?
I would just give you a little preview of this future request, there's one with like one million right now, twenty twenty-six. Nine hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty twenty-seven. Two hundred and six thousand in twenty twenty-eight and five hundred and ninety-five thousand in twenty twenty-nine. So that's a total of three point one million, and again, this does not include anything for Ray Mount. Or some of the things we're starting to think about for the board office. And then he also has. Equipment request. Well, before you do that, what was our capital improvements for last year?
Total, oh.
Is that, I'm talking about just for Rory?
I think we're in the trillion-dollar range.
That's okay, we can.
Yeah, I, I can get that to you, I, I should have that memorized, but I've got a lot of numbers in my head right now.
I would, I mean, depending on, you see where other things line up in the budget, but. I'd like to see the landscape moved up into this, this area. I've wanted to see it happen for a while.
I know, that's, yeah, that's why I wanted to bring that up, because that is something I know that's been important.
If we're looking at the back of Pinecrest, the facility, doing some things that could improve the appearance.
As we're looking at other your priorities. The ADA compliance, having that.
Yeah.
In yet another future year, I. Again, depending on how everything pans out. Might just be a question of, can we drive where it's at?
Yeah.
Make the board more sensible.
The the reason I put it there, quite honestly, is because we're doing this on the auditors in the elections counter. And I just really wanted to see how that process goes, see how the roll up doors work and. Um I just felt like uh um that that's if we want to follow suit with that same style, then that would allow me then to get it on for the next. Year, so. Oh, it's it's going to be uh interesting.
When you mentioned like the landscaping too, and using professional services, which depending on, I guess, we had time to do it or if it.
Yeah, and you know. I came up with that number um kind of based on a uh. Uh on an average, uh you know, uh landscaping services could run from this point to this point, and so I kind of pulled out in the middle. Um for us, and so that's how I came to that number, I did not talk to any specific landscaper. Um I just wanted to get a placeholder out there. Um and so we could, I've got some personal ideas on how we can do this, uh but I would definitely want to lean on. Somebody that does this for a living.
I think we might. Might want to think about how the renovation projects. Having those through summer, it's going to be a lot of staging, yeah. Things outside of the building, I mean, we might want to.
Well, just.
That done and then make it nice.
I'm glad you brought that up, because um uh that is a big deal, because we uh in our pre-bid meeting, that was a uh. That took up quite a bit of our conversation, is where do we put our dumpster, where do we put our vehicles, and uh. Um you know, fortunately, we have a set of doors on the fifth street side that don't get used, so that allows us to really. Uh stage things in a way that doesn't impact people coming in and out of the courthouse, but it does tie up that uh. Uh Fifth Street side of the courthouse. Um so yeah, it's uh, there could be a lot going on, definitely. But doesn't mean we couldn't possibly like at the Pinecrest facility, you know, this year and maybe courthouse next year, I don't know. Yeah, since we've got a a fire alarm replacement coming up, there's going to be a little bit of staging there, we've got an electrical upgrade. Uh so yeah, we we have very large projects on the horizon coming up, so that might be something, that's a good point to consider.
How old is the Pinecrest building?
Uh it's a little over a hundred years, I want to say we celebrated the hundred year. Oh gosh, I want to say nineteen ten, it's stuck in my head.
So history.
I've got one of the original postcards, yeah. And if you notice on that postcard, uh the dormers uh weren't there, so. At least protruding out, uh they were still there as the Catholic nuns used them as housing. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've done a good job, Rory.
I've been, uh it'll be uh fifteen years, let's know members.
Cause I made a point over that, we've been meeting, I mean, these buildings with diligent. Discipline and care every year. This is how we maintain them. I trust this old, but still, I think it's a beautiful building. I think courthouse is a beautiful building, our our properties are just, yeah, well cared for every year.
Yeah, our staff, our staff takes a lot of ownership, uh they really do, uh we've got a person that's dedicated to the Pinecrest, we've got three that are dedicated to the jail. And one dedicated to the courthouse, and they take it, they take it very serious.
So somewhere steel sheds are tough, I mean, the steel shed gets forty, fifty years old, they're tough to polish anymore.
Yeah, absolutely. They only get a leak like we did on Friday, that that that's kind of wakes us up a little bit to a uh. Something there as well, so I've got some interesting pictures that you'd like to see, but it looks like the Titanic going down. Uh with the amount of water that we had, fortunately, the damage resulted in primarily ceiling tiles, so. But again, yeah, again, uh my staff, uh they they got there quickly, they got dried up, when I went back, uh. The next day, you could hardly tell, I mean, it was amazing. So.
So workspace and everything, that was kind of like you said, it wasn't affecting us in my workspace.
It 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 just missed it, um if we wouldn't have caught uh this leak, it was on a Friday evening, if this wouldn't have been found. Uh chances are, we would have lost uh the whole east or the whole west end of that building, it would have just been devastating. Uh so kudos to uh. The person reporting that and the staff getting over there quickly, it was it was a mess.
Have you ever thought about any? I mean, we have certain locations, like I thought about, you know, caustic water sensor.
Yeah, in fact, that was a discussion we had in our staff meeting, uh there's different uh uh types of equipment you can put on, uh just water lines. Uh to send you alarm if it goes outside of a parameter, uh so if it's a toilet, it's running, uh. Overflowing, things like that, but yeah, you can set sensors up and and that was something we did talk about quite a bit at our staff meeting.
It's so well, I mean, some of the DIY would serve pretty low dollar, you know, the creature, you know.
I I know I I sent out the email with regards to, uh you know, my recommendations and. I will admit, that might have been just a bit of a knee jerk email, but uh as you can imagine, this has happened several times to us, and so. Uh most restrooms are on top of each other, uh and uh these on fifth floor are pretty unique, and they're pretty aged. Uh but if we get creative, I think there are ways we could probably uh buy some time.
I'm sorry, you want to touch on truck replacement? Just to make sure, I think you've got something to say about the truck replacement we didn't.
Uh that's just a, uh we started it uh last budget year to uh just start replacing all of our vehicles, um. I want to say the newest one we have is two thousand and fourteen, it goes down from there, uh very low miles, uh because but very hard to last. So that's just replacing our fleet.
All right, let me keep Brian's back. No big numbers on Brian's.
I'm sorry.
No, no big matrix on your page.
No.
Of numbers.
No, I'll address that, I'm going to be back up before you, February, you can talk about a few things that. Long story.
He decided it was too long. That's what I was going to say, too many statistics.
It broke it, um we can't just touch upon some of the numbers that weren't out there. Um my my plan was, well first, in November to come up before the board, we had a year in our drug diversionary program. We were going to come up in November. We then had another group that was going to graduate, they just graduated here last week. So I plan on February coming up before the board to talk about the numbers, bring the juvenile public defender's office, the judge and pathways along with us, so. Um that kind of skews kind of in the numbers, because we're not filing all those charges and being dismissed, so. Um I didn't want that, because last year we did present numbers, but this would be. Skew that number, because there's been hundreds of cases dismissed based on the diversionary program, so. Um. Uh the one major expense that uh. I had planned in FY twenty-four was office furniture paid out of fine collection. Obviously, with the court basement renovation. We're going to wait until that's done, so we'll probably plan on doing that. Next FY twenty-five. Fine collection is as steady as it's ever been, it remains to be unchanged in many regards. We had anticipated that fine collection would change three, four years ago with some legal changes. It hasn't, um and for the newer members of the board. I always like to point out with regard to the fine collection. It's a bit of a misnomer, because they do a lot more than that, they are truly case managers, they collect victim restitution, we have a cap program, they get people their driver's license back. If they didn't exist, they'd be someone would call the one eight hundred number and pay in. Uh a twenty-five percent upcharge, so it is a service that the county provides. We still, uh it still pays for itself. Other than that, um the only other line item that seems to kind of bounce back and forth since COVID is training. Uh we had to play catch up there for a couple of years. We're we're now kind of back to where we were. Other than that, story of the day, um I know the joke writes itself, but there is just a shortage of lawyers and um. Uh I've been sitting on a vacancy for three years, I have another one that just opened up, so. But it's not unique to Black Hawk County and Statewide, it's something that we're dealing with, so. Other than that, no major changes.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan, thank you.
It's on the agenda for today, so. Open it up if there's any questions from the board.
Any any questions for it, or anyone to discuss it before we. Right, entertain a motion to this.